Thank you. And, uh...
Good evening to everyone.
Um, before we start, are there any people that have served?
Raise your hands.
What's that?
The military.
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 What was the question?
Are there any people that have served in the military?
Oh, yeah.
Yes, I want to tell you thanks as much as I've heard never forget.
Yeah.
So, thank you. I'd like to thank you guys for the opportunity to, uh, to discuss and present, um, uh, what I was here to talk about. And I guess I'll kind of get started right into it. Um, let's see, where to start? So, first off, uh, my name's Keith Payne. Um, I'm a builder, developer from Indianapolis. Uh, I grew up Indianapolis, went to North Central High School. Let's see. My father was in the service too. Trying to think of what else to tell you guys. I'll just go ahead and start in the presentation and we'll kind of cover it as we go.
Well, if you don't mind, uh, I ran across, I already got Keith's name, uh, through a company in Indianapolis. Uh, we've been struggling looking for something that we can partner with for a, uh, building new home construction here in Union City. And so, we made the connection and I invited up here for this, uh, presentation.
That's good. Um, so anyway, as we begin, um, as I said, I'm a builder developer. And there was a unique opportunity that kind of came across, uh, from speaking with the mayor and speaking with some other people regarding some potential opportunity. Uh, my background, as I said, I'm from Indianapolis, North Central. Went to college, Dillard, uh, in New Orleans, studied real estate development. Uh, for years, I've been involved in real estate. Um, there's about thirty, thirty-something plus custom homes that we've done. A lot of retail build-outs. Um, I've been involved in some very major projects. The Indianapolis Airport, uh, before it started, um, and as it unfolded. Uh, we were very actively, um, involved as a, uh, supplier. That transferred over to, uh, Lucas Oil. Again, we were working very closely with Hunt Construction, uh, very large company. I got pulled, and this is kind of important for you to know about me before I go so you can kind of understand, you know, how I've gotten here and how we're presenting, how I'm presenting this. Um, I had a lot of involvement with, uh, Hunt Construction and sat on, uh, the board. I attended a lot of meetings at the board at the airport as they were unfolding the plans for what the city was planning on doing. This was a year before they even started any construction. And this was because I was a builder, uh, Willhome Construction, which is based out of Indianapolis, had a, um, uh, a material supply lumberyard. But they had always seen me coming in as I was building, you know, obviously a hard worker. I was always in my pickup truck throwing lumber and, you know, just getting the job done. So, I got stopped, uh, by them and said, you know, "Have you ever considered potentially becoming a supplier?" And at the time then, I was like, "No, I'm primarily a builder. I don't know anything about supplies. I know about buying it." And so, that's where it all started, where I, 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 um, started getting into supplies, working with them and Lilly as an MBE, uh, diversity supplier. And from going to Lilly, because Lilly was, has done a lot for the community. Uh, they have a huge outreach. Um, they had encouraged a lot of the larger companies to reach out for people that were qualified to try to help strengthen the chain, which I'm really very involved into that, believing in strengthening the chain. Fast forwarding, we ended up doing business with them, ended up following the airport as it started unfolding, started going to pre-bid meetings. And it gave me a chance to see a major project unfold from the grassroots. I didn't know it then, but as the airport unfolded, um, going through multiple meetings, going to a lot of construction meetings, talking to larger national, international companies coming in of how they were, uh, attempting to execute the plan and seeing how it all came together really kind of gave me a really good insight of pulling together community projects, community, pulling together concepts, which I do all the time in building, from talking to clients about ideas they have and being able to kind of pull those ideas into a format that, that combines form and function, which in essence means that you, you, you live what it is that you've built. So, it almost works harmonious together. So, that being said, the, uh, airport unfolded. We ended up being the highest, um, um, producing contractor on the MBE side because I started building relationships with a lot of different companies, you know, just from meetings like this, finding out, you know, what's the narrative? What's your objective? What are you trying to accomplish? Well, Keith, we need to, uh, purchase, uh, this type of material for such and such. And because I had familiarity with plans, I could be able to see what they were after and be able, because I'm used to building homes and knowing the logistics involved from getting from point A to point B, I could quickly understand what they were trying to accomplish. And this actually ended up playing out well. Uh, not that I knew, but it made it very easy for me being able to, uh, do business. And so, as a result of that, uh, we had, uh, we got set up to import glass, uh, from Beijing and Shenzhen, uh, China that, you know, I imported from, uh, Chicago, from Canada to Chicago, to Indianapolis, to the airport. So, a lot of the glass when you guys go, uh, into the airport, we had something, uh, to do with bringing that into the United States. Big learning experience as far as all that. Another thing is, uh, steel, Sevastil, which is a huge international company. We dealt with, uh, getting set up, uh, to procure steel from US Steel. Um, so, just dealing with the planning, uh, the logistics, the timing, um, you know, realizing your part and how you fit into the whole has really helped transfer. Uh, so, as I present this today, this is, uh, largely coming from what I've picked up over the years from working with Walsh, Lilly, um, you know, Pepper Construction. We were active also in the Ohio Rivers Project as I took off, another grassroots project. Um, so, as I'm approaching suggesting, uh, or proposing this, it is from a grassroots level because the first thing to be able to do in a project like this is paint the picture of a concept. Uh, you know, secondary, you have to make sure you can be able to establish, here's the foundation of, of what we're going to lay. And from that foundation is where you actually start building upon. And, uh, so today primarily is just a concept. It's a concept that'll have a, a foundation, um, and it'll show the steps, uh, what I'm recommending and also the benefits for the community. So, with that being said, um, so, um, that's the name of my company, ARHI. Uh, what this is, there's my resume here. It's kind of a little bit faint, but you guys can see, um, largely, um, you know, I'm a, I'm a designer, builder. Um, I've been doing this for a while. Not going to date myself, but, you know, I came out of college and got started right in the building. So, this, I've, I've, I've seen the ups and downs and things like that. Um, some of my skills, you know, were dealing with, uh, financial planning, uh, zoning, municipal, municipal logistics, uh, developmental design and management, uh, from concept to completion. So, this is basically a concept introduction. And so, from this point is where I can be able to build upon. But I kind of want to make sure everybody kind of understands, uh, some of the background. Uh, this will be available, uh, I, um, that I can email, so if anybody does want to see it in further detail. Um, so anyway, what this basically, what I'm proposing is, again, some of the things I learned, the airport, the stadium, Ohio Rivers Project, is something they call a P three. And a P three basically is a public-private partnership. That's how they get the, the P three from the three Ps there. And the benefit is for, you, you have both parties that help benefit the community. And in this regard, the public investment, um, is something that is put up. Many times, the cities will, will put up, uh, you know, tax abatements or they'll put up where they have different tax credits. Uh, in the earlier days, as Indianapolis was getting going, uh, there was a lot of property that the city would, uh, donate, uh, to help stimulate economic growth. Even today, uh, the city Indianapolis has spent a tremendous amount of money building a cultural trail, which many of you may have heard now, Bay Centrics, um, a lot of the other areas down in the Fountain Square area, Broad Ripple. These are all things that have happened because cities, um, will take a longer-term viewpoint of where they see the community going or where they want the community to grow. And they make an investment to encourage and stimulate that. Uh, because typically, somebody has to take the first step in order, like even in a dance, somebody's got to take the first step for you to actually dance because, uh, without that, everybody's just standing there. So, a P three and a public-private partnership allows for, uh, the public to make an investment. There is a public return, uh, usually comes in, into tax dollars. Uh, a lot of times, uh, generating synergy that will equate over into commercial development. Um, it creates excitement that as long as people are excited, they start, you know, coming in. As people come into town, they want to eat something, so there's more of a need for space. So, it just kind of starts building upon itself. And from the private side, there's a private investment, um, that helps to be able to stimulate it from more of a private economic standpoint. And the end result ends up being that the public gets a return and the private individual gets a return. So, this is kind of the fundamentals of where I'm kind of, uh, building up from. What I'm speaking about is within a particular area, um, which is, uh, Oak Street, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Um, there is a section of property that is on there and I'm, I'm going to show you where it is as I get to the next one. But, uh, I'm proposing this being, uh, developed as initially townhomes, uh, along there. The townhome concept that, you know, and I kind of studied the city as I came here once before and even as, as I've driven around and paid attention to neighborhoods because, you know, urban planning, regional development, that's kind of what, what I, what I do. Uh, and noticing people's habits, how they live, you know, house styles. Um, so, within the history of the city, this kind of mimics more of what I have seen historically that has been present within how the city has, has evolved. You know, I even kind of went back to some of the pictures, your historic pictures in the eighteen hundreds where they had all the electrical wires, it's all over the place, but they're all buried nowadays, uh, and looking at the architectural concept. So, this concept is, uh, something that's, uh, a development that's been very successfully done on the East Coast. And some of the things that pay attention, uh, architecturally, that will bring in this type of, uh, modern, older style is the offsets of how these buildings, uh, there's not a necessarily straight line. And one of my main specialties is in design because it's the detail of, you know, different types of decorative pieces here, uh, the different type of, you, in handrail, how you can tell how these columns, um, are offset, the different colors in the gutters, all these little details. And even on the sidewalk that I know, uh, there's been discussions about potentially having, uh, you know, a sidewalk, uh, brought in from, um, the graveyard, the grave area, um, up, I think it is through Oak Street. It's been conceptualized. But be able to have within their private partner, uh, sh- the, the public-private partnership, sidewalks, uh, roads, you have vegetative landscaping here that kind of, uh, it, it emits a feel of history there. And it emits a feel of number one, security because of how close the buildings are, but it also gives more of a modern flair and a connectivity, uh, within the neighborhood. These are shown as three stories. Um, the, what I would be proposing would be more of a two-story. Uh, these would be considered affordable housing, uh, which I think is very important after studying the market because, um, you know, some of the different types of, uh, listings that I have pulled from here uh, show that the, the average square foot for most of the newer homes are running about ninety-five dollars a square foot. Now, Random County does not have a tremendous amount of history on new construction, which kind of makes me really kind of slow down to look at what's actually being proposed to see that if there is actually demand that's there. But if the demand is there, the price point of affordable housing being ninety-five dollars a square foot, for what I'm proposing, twelve-hundred square foot, um, homes would allow the houses to come out on this area at about a hundred-ten to a hundred-and-thirty thousand dollars, um, per unit. And that would be including a garage. This particular layout is facing Oak Street. The garage would be around the back. Uh, so, I'm going to kind of go to this next slide here to kind of talk about some of the project overview and keep going. Um, it is a, uh, single-family, um, townhome development, uh, public-private partnership. Uh, this first phase is forty-four to fifty units of, uh, modern historic townhome, affordable housing. Um, I've already spoken to a lot of my team members, which you guys will see as I keep going, about how to design this affordable. Because just because housing is affordable does not mean it has to be cheap. When I deal with a lot of, uh, remodels, you know, total house guts, uh, bath remodels, kitchens, new homes and things, people often say, you know, "Keith, I don't have a high budget." Um, and a lot of times, people equate a low budget with being cheap. And it doesn't have to be that way. If you do your homework to make sure the details, like I was just talking about earlier on that previous, um, slide, that you, makes you accentuate to make it so that it's appealing to the eye. So, on the inside here, basically, it's a very simple, uh, design. Uh, it's right up the alley of how I tend to build. But you would have, uh, forty to fifty units within that townhome, a hundred to a hundred-and-thirty thousand dollar price point. The second phase being, uh, the, um, single-family homes, which is, uh, another parcel of ground uh, further away, um, from here. But that would be a second proposal phase in the event that this worked out well. Those would have a price point between a hundred-and-forty to three-hundred thousand. Um, the highest home that I was able to find within, uh, the particular area uh, was a home that did sell for three-hundred-and-thirty-four thousand dollars. But the challenge of it is, uh, we have to make adjustments because that is sitting on a five-acre parcel. But the snapshot of what I looked at, um, a hundred-and-fifteen thousand to three-hundred kind of gives me at least validation that there has been some history within here that has sold. And these two homes are fairly new, two thousand, I think the other one was like two thousand and five.
Question, on that town, how old, what's the bedroom and bathroom count?
Uh, it's pretty good, three bedrooms, uh, two and a half baths.
And in reference to affordable housing, what's, is that subsidized housing or what do you mean by affordable?
No, affordable, it's not subsidized, but affordable housing, um, by the, by the standards of FHA. Affordable housing keeps going up and it becomes actually, I think, more expensive housing because affordable housing now is anything that's two-hundred-and-ninety thousand down below. Um, and I think you have to kind of critique it to, to match a particular community. So, within this community, based upon historical sales, um, affordable housing here would have to be more between like ninety to maybe a hundred-and-thirty thousand. Still below the threshold from FHA, uh, national standards. Um, but as I'm speaking about that, that's, you know, coming in at that price point versus proposing two-hundred thousand dollar homes because it's, the community doesn't have a history of, of, of that. If that makes sense. Um, so, moving forward, um, so there is a design and development planning, uh, that would run concurrent, uh, as this would potentially move forward. I'm proposing that Union, uh, City puts in basically the initial, um, upfront seed money. Uh, I'm a small developer, but in ninety percent of all the developments that I've spoken with, uh, people like George Sweet, that went before he built, uh, Village of West Clay, somebody I know, I knew after I came out of college. Um, and he had me involved so I could see how that unfolded. Uh, and that was literally six-hundred-and-forty acres, uh, before they, uh, that they went through the carmel to get all this approved. Now, to see where the Village of West Clay is, is kind of interesting because I remember back when, uh, it was just starting, not that I'm trying to date myself. Keep moving forward. So, anyway, this is the, uh, proposed townhome layout of some preliminary work that was done by North Point. Um, you know, this is Oak Street up here. Uh, as you remember the houses I was showing you saying this would be a walkway where the houses are facing that. Uh, you'd have another roadway basically that would come through for a back alley that would have the garages here. Uh, these units, um, would face, uh, along this particular alley. And I think along here is, is a vacant lot with some other types of, um, uh, electrical poles. I think there's something. So, there would have to be some type of vegetative fencing that would be planned into this that would allow for, um, probably having to get a, uh, a, a variance of a type to put the taller type of fence versus an eight-foot. You may put a, a taller, um, ten-foot, uh, wooden fence there that's going vertical. It may have some design behind it, like if this was a fence, you would have the fence here, but then you would have some types of vegetative plantings along the fence. And, you know, have some type of, uh, design running so when the people are looking at this, they have something nice to look at. And many times when you guys see, uh, commercial developments in really nice neighborhoods, if you ever drive around the back, I do this because I tend to dissect stuff when I see successful projects, you'll see in the back of those developments, um, the back of them look almost as nice as the front because the neighborhoods want to make sure that if this commercial unit's coming in here, I have something that's not going to detract from my existing house. So, that would be kind of the concept that would be designed in, which is all part of the plan. Um, so, this is the initial configuration. We would kind of look at this further and critique it, uh, with my team because I have a team of architects, uh, attorney, um, my civil engineer. There's, there's about five people on the team, which you'll see here, that I work closely with. Um, this is a concept. This is not the particular style because I have not had, uh, I just kind of wanted to get a general concept so you guys could kind of see where I'm coming from. This is a home that I've designed and I'm building currently on my project in Indianapolis. It's a, uh, sixty-five, fifty-six acre lake in South Broad Ripple. And, um, so what I've done is these are designed more around a Mediterranean. And the concept I came up with to keep things affordable is, um, this is about a twenty-foot span here, between here and here. Mainly, everything's built and designed evenly so that way you get even lumber distribution. So, when you're buying something, you're not buying it and then the carpenters have to cut it because the minute they cut it, that's taking time. And the minute it takes time, that's costing money. So, the less, the less, the, the, the less cuts and the more efficient the house is designed, it just kind of goes up more like a cookie cutter, keeps down the time and that cost transfers all the way throughout the whole project. But in order to get that, you have to think ahead to design it that way from the get-go. So, this particular style is a three-bedroom, um, and I need to get a little closer. So, here's the first floor here. So, you have a bedroom, 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 a nice, um, walk-in closet here, you know, bath. This is a standard floor plan that I, I'll be using there. This is the floor plan that I'm suggesting that we use as a basis for the two-story townhomes that I'm proposing here. Now, the fronts would not be more of a Mediterranean style because this is something I designed based around, uh, demand within Indianapolis. You know, Meridian Kessler, uh, you know, Broad Ripple has a lot of the styles of homes that have some part of an Italian, uh, Mediterranean style. Here, the primary design will be focused around a farmhouse style. Now, the nice thing about being in a rural area like this, farmhouse-style homes are pretty much the way everything is already designed. It's already taken off, uh, like wildfire across the nation, people building farmhouse-style homes. So, um, this would be kind of more geared toward farmhouse-style homes. But this is the style and, uh, layout of the found, of the, uh, floor plan. Um, this is something else for a second phase, a single-family development. Um, and, uh, this is kind of, uh, right now, this is where the, um, um, turbine is, uh, somewhere in this particular area of it. Uh, but this would be more of a second phase, uh, after getting started on the, uh, townhome and, and that becoming successful. Um, again, this is another layout of, um, a hundred-and-forty-four lots versus a hundred-and-forty-eight. But again, these are farmhouse-style homes I'm going to show you. Things that I kind of picked, went through, this matches kind of more of my style of, of building. Now, these are fairly expensive-looking homes that you're seeing. But in my design, what I do is I pick out parts, what make this look like this, and we scale it down. We scale it down so that, you know, the average size of the homes would be about twelve-hundred to fifteen-hundred feet. Now, the uniqueness of what I'm proposing, and I've been around long enough and I've studied enough other different builders, the difference between me and another established company coming in is the company, the, the, the company's going to look at the land and say, "Can this land fit our profile or our format of how we tend to do such?" I think this will fit this style that we've done here. And they just take it, make some alterations, flop it down there. Um, and that's how you end up seeing a lot of houses that tend to kind of look the same. Um, so, in my particular case, um, we've built a lot of houses, but I have to build, uh, the concept and designs from scratch, which is a very unique scenario. This is part of the benefit I would get on the private side is that we now would be able to have a repertoire of homes that have a particular style. So, this is one other style here, uh, this is another type of style. A lot of the homes that I've picked, uh, for concepts, um, have a lot of ornate design. And, you know, they're, they're more or less nice-looking cottage homes with a lot of character because I think that if the house is going to be small, you can still have a lot of character in there uh, from using affordable, um, materials in there. This is another particular style. Uh, this is another one, pay attention to the arches. Uh, again, these are very basic homes because, you know, from a builder's standpoint, you've got, you know, a gable here, a gable here, and you've got your ridge running across here and a gable to gable. That's pretty much it. You don't have any clipped gables. You don't have, in custom homes, you can have, where you can have offsets that, that are very complicated to build. This is really, uh, a trust system that's going through here and a trust system here going into the back, dying into it. The only thing that you spend a lot of time on is creating this type of detail, which is what catches the eye. Um, so, you know, as putting the houses together, um, I would be focusing on that. Again, this is very simple, simple elegance, that, you know, just how you put things together so it's appealing to the eye, um, um. And here is another particular style. Here is more of a, uh, a modern, um, style. Again, this is a very easy build because if you look at the roof structure, it's got some verticality there. And these are just some additional, uh, accentuations to it that, that can be filled, built very easily. Again, from a drive-by, uh, it would be very attractive. Um, there is, um, an interest in making sure there's no front-load garages so that way there's side-load because the lots that have been proposed on the single-family are wide enough that if you have a wide lot, I mean, why put the garage to the front? I, you know, and so, if you just put the garage to the side, the garage could be on that other side. We can't see it. But driving by, you just see all, all facial front of the house, which really helps in value, um, to it. Um, the neighborhood would also have a homeowners' association so that way it would limit, so that you can't have people just starting to accumulate stuff here and, um, and have guidelines there because those are part of the things that...
You've been through our town then.
I've been through many towns. And I've seen whereas, uh, even in the city, where building houses for people, I've done remodels and somebody said, "You know, my next-door neighbor's house is good, great people, but they're so messy." They put stuff out on the front porch and, and I'm like, "Don't you guys have a homeowners' association?" "No, we can't do anything about it. You're stuck." So, in newer developments like this, I think you set down, you know, a guideline for what people, uh, can and can't do, not limiting them too much, but you want to kind of protect everybody's value. Um, again, these are just other different styles. Uh, I noticed you guys have a lot of metal roofs here, so there's, there must be a metal company nearby.
Yeah, Ridgeville.
Okay.
It's been a long legacy of that.
Has it? Well, you know, I, I love metal roofs. I absolutely love them and I've seen different colors. So, a lot of the... So, a lot of the design for what I'm proposing, we would come up with probably about eight different floor plans. Not having one or two different floor plans with variations, because one of the neat things what people like about custom homes is they feel my house is different. So, instead of having one or two different houses with, with different variations, I think if you have more where people can pick from with limited variations, so you can have kinda more creativity, more uniqueness. Again, what this does is for investing into Union City is, and as I go forward, further into this, into community outreaches, you create an excitement, you know, there's not a lot of new construction that happens in, in-
Small communities.
Small communities, yeah, thank you. Randolph County was my thinking. So, the mere fact that you guys are even considering this, I have a tremendous amount of respect for you, because in business, you have to take a risk, it needs to be a calculated risk, but when you take that calculated risk and you reap the benefits, you fully deserve what you've taken this, this calculated risk on, on like a private-public partnership. And with the things that I'm understanding that could potentially happen here, you guys would be ahead of the curve, so that as things began to happen, you'd be able to benefit. So, these are just some other various styles of houses, I'm gonna kinda get to the mechanics here. These are some of our partners, obviously you guys would be number one. We work with Y Engineering, I don't know if some of these companies you guys have heard of, but Michelle and those guys are the law firm that deals with a lot of real estate. They would be the ones drafting documents for homeowners' associations, transfers of titles, things, the investment that I'm proposing that the city makes, part of it would be planted within the property, so that each time there is a particular closing, there would be more of a, a type of reimbursement back to the, to the city, that would be more like an endowment or kind of a, we'd label it something so that the investment, you actually get part of it back. Most developers don't usually do that, they'll usually, you know, we need this, we need this, we need this, and then you're gonna get it from the tax dollars, obviously, but you guys are a small city, you know, I'm a small developer. So, the thing is, everybody has to help everybody get across the finish line. So, these are some of our partners here, Sleeping Giant, individual that has a marketing, she does a lot of design work for magazines, a very creative, a, a small business, but a really high-energy go-getter. Young Architecture is, is an architect I've worked with for years, Brian's a very creative, very conservative architect, and I've talked to him already about designing affordable housing, and he said, you know, we've, I've worked with this capacity with many communities, and it's all in how you design it so that everything works together. As far as engineering is another engineering company. So, these are some of the mechanics of the project, everybody doing their part in turning the wheels. We've already discussed the LLI engagement, I think you guys are already familiar with that letter of intent presenting to you guys here to counsel today. The city finds the soft costs for the development package is calculated, and you'll see the breakdown of the initial investment here that will happen over time. The development package completed and reviewed would be something I would prepare upon us beginning, that would have, basically, the, the package would end up being about this thick by the time we got through it, cause it would be more or less a playbook that would have things from the engineering, things for utility. In my development, I just spent five months going through submittals to FEMA, NDOT, and also Department of Natural Resources, DNR. So, these processes are becoming much more lengthy. As the city gets bigger, you know, they have to slow down to make sure you check the effect, you know, the cause and effect has to be looked at closer. So, there's quite a bit involved to, to put together the package, but then there would be a closing, a transfer of the property into an LLC, so we could be able to start selling, pre-selling. We would be meeting with Randolph County for utility installs, a lateral, trying to leverage to see if the county could potentially participate, because this would be a huge deal for Union City, because there's not been anything at this magnitude that I've kind of seen, and am I okay so far?
Yeah, I was looking for Gary Gert, is he still here?
I think he had, I believe he has another meeting.
He was county commissioner, I was wondering, it was perfect though that he at least got a taste of what we're talking about.
Well, and hopefully he'll be able to see this, and I think it may be on, so that he could be able to re-watch it back.
I will send it to him.
Okay, but again, the county's a, a critical component to the partnership, again, much as I've seen with the airport, Lucas Oil, different things that go on in the city of Indianapolis, of the city's involvement to put the initial investment up. Even when you look at the cities that were vying for the Olympics, you guys probably remember, everybody's putting their packages together, well, the package for the city of Indianapolis, I found out, it costs like almost, you know, it was several hundred thousand dollars, I don't know the exact number, but I do know it was several hundred thousand dollars just to put a package to bid on it. So, the city's constantly reinvesting to be able to continue to get growth coming back in, which is why we have such a strong state, because of the investments and looking, you know, for the future. Again, here are some of the other key parts here, the community outreach for subcontract labors. Now, this is largely drafting off of what I have seen that has made these public projects successful, is that you have to have a community outreach, the community has to be involved, it can't be something that is just done, and oh, here, take a look at this. You have to reach out, reach out to all the different companies that are around here, saying, hey, listen, we're gonna do something new, we're gonna help stimulate growth, it's here, I mean, there's not been any newer developments that's happened. So, somebody out here has to want a new home versus continually buying an older home, not that anything's wrong with it, but we have to have buy-in from the community. So, the way to do that is you have community outreaches, that you, you put the word out and you do a, a large presentation to get people involved and get people talking, get people asking questions, you show the houses and get interest. Also dealing with community outreaches for subcontractors. I'm a huge advocate of, and, you know, again, something I respected from with the airport, is that these companies would come in from out of the, from international, but they would embrace hiring local, I mean, versus they come in, you make the money, and they're gone, and it leaves, you know, the community desolate, basically. This is really big, because I feel that it's necessary to make sure you reach out to find the subcontractors, find the people who are electricians, you know, find people who are plumbers, find people who, you know, that can do landscaping, that can lay foundations, and you start working with that core group, and through a program office and an outreach, you, you organize everybody, so everybody is participating, and again, that's involving the community. And I think for a smaller city like this, I think you guys could get a tremendous amount of attention, if it's approached in a manner where you're involving everybody, cause people tend to respect the fact that, you know, you know, community involvement. This would also involve utility, road installation, water, gas, all this would be in the planning stage of what I'm proposing. I would obtain the building permits to deal with it, we build a, a model home, I've already spoken to two different banks about what I'm potentially proposing, what could happen to get involvement, to help put up a model home on my side, to be able to get something, so that we could be able to have people start coming through. We had also established a construction program office somewhere within here in the city, that we'd be interested in working with the city with a, either an old building that you guys may wanna see remodeled, that we'd be able to come in and, you know, help out within that, you know, maybe a, a donation to us that will come in and do the remodeling of that in a very, a very visible area, so that way, again, create the excitement. The media outreach is another big factor, which, you know, I'm very glad that we've got media coverage so far today on this is helpful, but it was probably just planned, but this type of outreach, publications, and partnering with the community makes it so you have to have an all-hands-on-deck situation. These are some of the initial soft costs of getting this started. Now, typically, within any developer, this is gonna be a cost of, that you're gonna have to bear. It's just, you cannot be able to move forward without at least having done your due diligence, having your team to have a package ready to actually go forth. This would be part of this initial soft cost, which comes out to about four, four thousand eight hundred dollars per lot, which is about normal, it's normal for soft costs being within there per lot, that we would look at earmarking part of that within the fifty-two lots, so each time a lot sells, there's a portion of that that goes back to the city, to be able to help out. But this covers, you know, civil engineering, drainage, utility, there'd be a plethora of, of meetings and drawings, working with drainage, the, the legalities of setbacks and all this stuff that would have to be involved, designing it out, the marketing, the architectural, the design of the houses, the legal, community outreach for the subs, the buyers. These are all kinda integrated in, which I'm not gonna go into, cause I'm already kinda going a little further over where I should be, but I appreciate you guys' patience. But this, I kinda wanna make sure I put at least a map out here, so you can kinda see, you know, how the costs break out here, what's involved to be able to get something going. Now, in a house that I'm doing right now in Indianapolis, one home that we had to deal with DNR and Citizens Energy, just to build a house, one house, I'm already out of pocket ten thousand dollars, just between permits, laterals, different inspections, mandrels, you know, all this other video, all this stuff as-built, just on one house. So, I know that there's a lot involved, but there is an initial investment to help stimulate the growth.
Can I ask, go back, can you, and the, the forty-eight hundred, that's the average cost that we have in that, that's factored into the cost of the, of the building, of the, of the construction?
Correct.
And is it returned back to the city?
Not, not, yeah, not the full forty-eight, it'd probably be about half of that, from what we're calculating, that, and, and again-
Or, or could that be used for assistance in down payment?
It could, but that would be your call.
Yeah.
I mean, my whole thing is what I try to do is, this is how I figure it out financially, it can work, this is what we can do giving back. Now, what you decide to do with that, it would be, that would be very appropriate, because it would help, you can have down payment assistance that then ends up happening, it creates a, a recirculating effect, which would compound on itself. So, again, that's open for discussion, however you guys would wanna, but it would be something good. I think it's important that, you know, if we're gonna receive, we need to make sure we're giving back something. I'm kinda old-school how it was brought up, so, you know, I, you know, I believe if you take, you gotta give, it's just a lot of the land, the farmers have lived by this for years, it's work, so they need the party, so that's kinda my concept of, but you could use that for down payment assistance. And basically, Union City, you know, united we grow, we get everybody involved, and as part of this, there is my company, there's my website, I really, you know, invite you all to take a look at my website, it has a lot of work that I've done, videos that you can see, houses I've done from beginning to the end, where it's fast-forward, so you guys see my, my concepts and styles. So, any other questions, otherwise I'll let-
Well, let me just point something out in regards to tonight, we also had, Brody Tarter brought his team in on the realty side. We have Planet Home Lending here as well, I mean, so we're kinda looking at how we can go at this for a turnkey operation for, for, for potential homebuyers.
Right.
And what we hope to do on that, just to answer your question about the down payment system, naturally, everybody in the world has the USDA hundred percent, and they have the VA hundred percent, but we've worked in there also, that we're trying to get into the project where there's a, a minimum amount of closing cost that people use. Now, on the bank side, we don't need to make the money on that part of charging people, which they do fees, but your title company fees, your appraisal fees, the research that Nate and I are doing on that, to try to get people in this area to be able to understand that we have a crew for appraisals, then what we do is if we try to take that couple thousand dollars, work into the pricing for the closing costs, so the hundred percent ability is there. On top of that, today, you've always heard of only three percent down, or three and a half percent down FHA loans, and you had to have certain regulations to it, well, we've stretched the regulations in many of the things that Nate and I've done to keep that minimum down payment, even a three percent down conventional product, there could be gifts, that could be, you know, they sell their car, they sell their truck, they sell their extra boat they have, so gift monies, or, so we're trying to get the programs for Keith together, to where people can come in with very minimum down, and then the cost expense over and above, the people go, well, where did that come from? We try to pick up on the, on the bill part, if that helps.
Perfect. Good job.
Have you done any towns, small towns before?
Uh, we, I haven't, I've built homes in small towns, Lebanon, I've built-
Any of them here in Indiana?
Yeah, in Lebanon, Indiana, there was a A-frame home I, I built, it was pretty far, there wasn't anything around for a mile. It was one of the nicer homes that I had built, that's probably, it's been a while ago, but recently, no.
You haven't done no projects like this with small towns, this would be the first?
This would be the first. One of the fundamentals that I, I think that is, is key in this, because everybody starts from some point. But you wanna make sure from the point somebody's proposing to start, that there's enough history and enough experience to be able to know how to create it, because from my standpoint, understanding development, and, and because of what I had to go through creating my own development, there is, it's a step process, and that's why you saw there our partners. All those are people I work with all the time, I mean, I can call into Y, I can call, and that's all Y does, is primarily full-scale developments, they do a lot of municipal, they do very large projects, and they do little projects with small people like myself, because they wanna help grow me. Same thing as with my attorneys, they've done a tremendous amount of legal work for real estate deals. They don't do litigation, they're primarily just business practice, real estate, it's a very sharp, sharp people. I have the experience because of going through many ups and downs that you've been battle-tested, that's the reason why I said never forget, because the thing is going into the military, which I don't have any experience on that, but I did get a chance to go on the USS Stenets as a guest, to see how the military operates, but the thing is, is that you wanna make sure in projects like this, you've got people that have been battle-tested, that you've, you know, I, it's not that I've only built one house, I've built several houses, and I've built a lot of houses, I've bailed people out of problems, where I had to come in and correct stuff, a lot of that adds to my knowledge of the development work and the process.
Very, very impressive resume of, of different designs you have, and certainly a lot of these are absolute, what's, what's I think's brilliant, some of the designs you, you shared with us, is they capture a lot of history that already exists in the community, but at the same time, it's a subtle infusion of some contemporary style.
Right, I'm glad you picked up on that.
Yeah, that really, it, it really is, it makes, it would make for a very nice neighborhood, very beautiful neighborhood. Now, so if I were saying this right conceptually, would there be one, would the goal be to build one unit initially as a model home, or is, or, and to see the, kinda gauge the interest, or, or is it more aggressive than that initially?
Well, from a simplistic standpoint, minimal would be one. What I'm pushing for is the banks that I'm speaking to, is talking about the project, we need to build the first building, you know, we need to build the first six units, so that way they can sell on demand. And I think the importance of, it's kind of the chicken and the egg which comes first, but the community outreach is huge, because, again, this has been what I put together. Now, what you would see for the community will blow this away, this will look like, this will look like a little bike on the highway. I mean, because the people I work with are just that good, I, I don't keep people around me that can't perform, because I don't like losing, you know, I like coming in, we're, we're out in front, you come out very strong, a very clear directive, a very clear concept. You come out very strong, a very clear, uh, directive, a very clear concept. So the, the goal would be at minimum, you, you do one house, because I know I could do that. The goal would be getting the banks involved, so I can do six right off the bat. And you couple that with a community outreach, saying, we're gonna be starting the initial building coming up here. We're taking pre-sales right now. We're taking reservations. So from a banking standpoint, um, Mike could help us if I have pre-sold six houses, uh, or ten houses. That's why that community outreach is huge, because we can find that there's pent-up demand. People like being in the county, but there's nowhere new that I could buy. So what you guys are, are proposing, especially you've picked up on what I was trying to convey. And if you have, that means others probably will, because it still, uh, embraces the history. But you do have that little, you know, pinch of the whole contemporarism, but you're not lost. And so I think in that regard, I think we could very well get pre-sales prior to construction that we could be able to get them qualified, 'cause I work with First Financial, which is right down the street. When I came here, I was like, that's I, 'cause that's the bank I work with. So, uh, as a matter of fact, I called my bank. I said, I didn't know there was one here, but, um, but anyway, they have, they have also construction programs that I've worked with. You know, there's five different banks that I work with in, in, uh, construction loans for custom homes. But with the fact of, of the history I have, working with Mike in the past, he's got a, a very in-depth knowledge of understanding the construction process. So many times, we may go and put the roads and sewers, work with Randolph County, they help put the utilities in. Um, you know, we may have it so that half of that cost, the initial front, goes into the development. And you guys may say, we're gonna elect to be able to give that back to people on down payments. Well, coupled with what he just said, you know, things that they can be able to do to help offset down payments, people may be coming to the table literally with almost nothing. And with the contribution you guys do, makes it very affordable, 'cause many times, you know, and I'm a broker. I know in, in real estate class, they always drill the fact that people don't necessarily pay attention to the price, to the price. They pay attention to the payment. And getting into the house to afford that payment, many people could afford six hundred dollars a month, you know, seven hundred dollars, even, you know, on a, a hundred and thirty thousand dollar house, what, what would that probably be on the payment? What is it? Eight hundred?
Six, seven, eight hundred dollars.
Yeah, eight hundred bucks.
Taxes and-
Yeah.
Association dues, you try to keep down, homeowners association dues, 'cause they get outrageous a lot of times. Three, four hundred dollars a month, we get them into seventy-five, eighty-five dollars per house.
Right. So you keep that affordable. So the point being, the affordability, the price, which is what people will watch, is what you primarily push. In an outreach, you know, you can have one of these houses, one of the smaller homes. You put the disclaimer out, you know, the houses start eight hundred dollars a month. You know, so if two people are working even at service places, um, and they don't have very much debt, even a credit score probably six, what, six fifty, six, somewhere around there. I know their range is. But, uh, they could be able to get into a house. Many times, what holds people back is that down payment, is the closing cost. So by everybody contributing just a little bit, um, it, it makes it very affordable. Oh, wow, well, with this program, you mean I only need to really come with five hundred dollars?
Well, pre-start this, is that you've gotta take, when I've done several developments also on the sales side, like Kokomo opened up when they were having problems, and they took the Wildcat Golf Course. They couldn't sell the properties. They brought me in two or three days a week. We, we ran into eight to twelve units a month. At that time, it's good to know that the person's not gonna be qualified and then walk on the deal. So large developers that we would talk to, you know, they're just one-sided people. This is the way they do it, and they don't have any change. Where Keith's wide open to follow whatever the consumer is looking for. In our cases, we try to take a minimum down payment to keep the person structured, to know that that, and then get the, the community outreach, the carpenters, the plumbers, the electricians. This will spread like wildfire, just to them to tell their friends and neighbors, look what we're doing. So that's the biggest key. The bigger outlet of a builder is going to bring his crew in with his attitude and from his area. And if you put a little small town, like I grew up in Seinesville when it was nothing and watched it develop, you know, and tried to help Kokomo. I tried to help Noblesville all through the nineties with RDJ Builders. At this time is the outreach to the people. Then you have to sit down and give them something, which we wanna do. We wanna give them a, a, a nice home with a nice choice that's affordable cost. They're gonna have to put something into it to, you know, the first eight we sell, they put something into it. You put some down payment, you get some money back, type of thing. But you just don't wanna give them away to low income.
Right.
Because low income's gonna trash it out. And that's not the design we wanna do, really.
Yeah.
Right? So you wanna have a little structure to it, reasonable payment, for somebody that wants a nice home to keep up a nice home.
Yeah.
So it can grow through that area.
Well, along those lines too, there are some homes in that neighborhood, 'cause obviously, you know, you talked about earlier having a homeowner's association, and one of the objectives of that, just spitballing, not being a part of one, but I would imagine is to protect the investment of the homeowner.
Right.
So with that being said, you know, there are some properties here and there, on the other side of the street, in, on that street, that, that are not up to maybe the quality that someone moving into a, a, an entity such as this would desire to be across from.
Right.
So what history has demonstrated, or, or what evidence is there, if any, for, let's say, the city was able to put something together where maybe we identified, uh, X amount of properties, two, three properties on that street, close by, within visual proximity, that if they were purchased and rehabilitated through local contractors, could they be melded into that or molded into a homeowner's association?
Well, again, at this state of anything is possible. However you wanna, uh, thread all that together, uh, they could be tied into the homeowner's association.
It's a certain square footage. I mean, it's a certain distance away, so the people across the street could-
Conceivably.
Conceivably. And if we're sitting here with banks, how would you like to remodel?
Right.
And, and, and try to keep the facial look, so-
Right.
You're absolutely right. You, you, you want those people to appreciate the good luck and try to-
Yeah.
Upgrade, absolutely.
Because with that being the case, you know, what will entice people coming in to homeowner's associations? It, it definitely helps protect value, because there's, there's a, there's a baseline of, um, there's a standard. Um, and that standard at minimum, that's the reason why, you know, you go to areas which, you know, all throughout Florida, all throughout, you know, California, a lot of places that I travel, you know, one of the things I do is spend time driving through neighborhoods, especially high-end neighborhoods, um, to see what is it that keeps them at that particular level. And there, a lot of times, they're very strict homeowner's associations. Um, I'm not saying it needs to be so strict where people can't do anything, but at least a base level, I think that's a great idea, that the city getting involved to potentially encourage remodeling in that. You know, I know back in Indianapolis, they had, where they were giving homes away for a dollar, um, that are now, those homes down in Alabama are, you know, five, six, seven hundred thousand. I remember coming out of college, they were giving those away. And it's, you know, I wish I had have known then. I mean, 'cause they're, so at this point, subject to, uh-
Well, it increased a lot in broad ripple. It increased a lot in several of the areas that you've worked and I've worked. When you start building, developing like that, the other people get that paintbrush in their hands. They get that car out of the front of their house. They get their trash cans.
Yeah.
And that's where the association comes in a little bit. How would you like to join into that? So I, I don't know how that would be, but you'll get a tendency. And, and, and then again, how could we come up? We have painters on site here that we've hired in the local community. How can we help you by doing a deal for-
Right, right.
You would pay three thousand dollars to have your house painted. How would you like to maybe have us participate? As I mentioned, that we have that extra thousand, fifteen hundred dollars supplement. How would you like to help us participate if you join our association to help you paint your house?
Yeah.
And you could do it for five hundred to sit at three thousand. And as a builder, we'll help participate in that way, because the property is going to build value. Naturally, you got a raw ground piece of property. As soon as you put a house on it, what does it do? Triples the value of the lot. So there's the down payment, and can we help the community across the street?
And see, uh, adding to that, the key part of this is, or the allowances, uh, within legal. I've already spoken to the attorney, uh, the attorneys, the guys I know, that, you know, this will most likely involve, uh, different aspects that may have to be done to help make it work. So that can be written into it. Uh, again, another opportunity is community development block grants, uh, which are huge. I don't know if you guys have ever applied for something like that, but, you know, I know this is an opportunity zone. And with that being said, there's specific interest in stimulating growth here. And so I think there's a lot of, um, there's a lot more to be able to be looked at to be able to help the neighborhoods be able to be remodeled. 'Cause just the other day, somebody called me from, uh, the city and said, um, you know, hey Keith, just wanted to let you know, the city just got, you know, a half million dollars to, um, help build some houses in the Twin Ares area where they're gonna be doing this new, um, uh, I don't know if it's a law, uh, the courthouse or something like that. But it, obviously, is something they applied for, the guy. And the same thing is with you guys having an opportunity zone, um, and the mere fact of you taking a bold step like this, potentially, um, and leveraging people who are already in support of you guys, um, I think you could get some traction. Uh, 'cause there's, there's a lot of people, um, that are very much so pushing Indiana. And, you know, Indianapolis, uh, has done well over the years, that, you know, we've overtaken Cincinnati, 'cause I know coming up, when I was younger, Cincinnati was the city. That was the city everybody, uh, focused on. But, you know, when, um, you know, Hudnut started pushing, uh, some of the programs, uh, that actually, and Luger, uh, it, the city has stayed consistent with a vision. And it's, it's, uh, whereas Cincinnati has sometimes wandered like this. And the minute, it's like going to college. The minute you change your major, you've added another year, yet alone another, however many thousands of dollars. So once you guys, if this is something that is embraced, everything else gets built around that. I mean, this is a primary, uh, project, you know, everything else is built around that. The sidewalks are built in to involve community involved. All those house plans all have porches, because porches tend to make people sit out there. And when people sit out and kids are riding down the street, oh, hey Mary Sue, how you doing today? And then, oh, they stop over it, and it causes neighborhoods to connect. And so that type of community is what creates synergy. And so that involvement, that's, I think it's a great idea. I think it's a great idea.
Appreciate that. Appreciate your insight.
Interesting question, uh, in regards to if we're providing connectivity all the way to the downtown with, uh, a, a trail walkway there. Um, what, what would it take to accommodate, uh, you know, accessibility for wheelchairs?
I think it's important to incorporate that.
'Cause we have an aging population as well.
Yeah. I think, uh, you're talking about within the townhome, or you're talking about potentially?
Townhome.
Um, I think it's important, um, getting now, getting the house, getting the townhome where it has a bedroom on the first level, we would, and that's a very good, it's a very good thought, 'cause I would probably need to make sure at least one was designed so that even though you may build the six, if somebody who is handicapped, they say, hey, I'd really would like to build one, well, we do have a particular floor plan, um, that is handicapped. It's like going to-
Entrance from the front and the back.
Yeah, entrance from the back.
Entrance from the front and the back in, in a one level, in the first level master.
Yeah.
With overlaid door.
Yeah.
Overlaid bathroom door.
So we could design a plan particularly like that and make us sort of ramps to the back aesthetically so that you don't interrupt the, the beauty of the, of the frontage. 'Cause I think the frontage, the sidewalk, um, all along Oak Street, some of the houses I remember seeing along there are some really beautifully old historic homes. And you wanna embrace that, 'cause, you know, my, my oldest daughter's in, uh, she goes to Columbia in Chicago. And so we're up there all the time, and, and we were driving through a particular neighborhood, and I was telling my wife, I said, this neighborhood does not even feel like it's downtown. And it had, you know, had, it reminded me partially of Oak Street, um, not that it's in its full, uh, development that I envisioned, but that old-school feel, um, I think can be embellished on. Um, and so handicap accessibility, I think, is really big, because you, again, you wanna kinda be inclusive. A lot of handicap people do, um, want housing. But the problem is, you know, a lot of the houses don't accommodate that. So a master on the first floor, you know, ramp to the back, oversized doors to accommodate that, I think would be a key point that I would remember.
Any other questions, counsel? Comments?
Excellent presentation. And sure appreciate you making the trip up here for us, 'cause this is, this is quite an opportunity.
Yeah. And, you know, I appreciate the opportunity. And the, the thing of it is, um, I always remember, uh, you know, in order to obtain success, you have to be willing to go to that extra distance. I mean, that, that shouldn't even be a second thought. For me, it's not even a second thought, driving this far. It's not even a second thought of how much work is gonna be involved if this is something that moves forward. It, it's a tremendous amount of work, but the reward will be far worth it. So I just, I appreciate you guys taking the time to let me present.
Thank you so much.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.